This is an Unspoiled Network Podcast.
This is Spoil Me, covering What We Do in the Shadows, Season One, Episode Two, City Council. In, in this episode, so our friends have decided that they are going to try their damnedest to take over all of North America, and they are starting small by attending a city council zoning meeting. Welcome to Spoil Me. Welcome to the show, everyone. I am Natasha. Thank you very much to Ashley for commissioning this episode. Hi, Ashley, if you're out there. So, okay, first of all, everybody, I am going to direct you to this tweet from Gretchen Smale. Uh, I don't know if y'all are aware of this, but here is what Nandor looks like without any of the makeup and with short hair and a slightly shorter beard. I would like to register my discomfort with the fact that he looks like a fucking model and is in fact better looking than the man on Fleabag who nobody can stop telling is him how good-looking he is. What, I like, I'm so mad that I even went and checked what he looked like because this is gonna be incredibly distracting to me now. I was just watching and I was like, you know, Nandor has like a pretty good, like solid face, very symmetrical, and clearly he's got makeup on, maybe he's even wearing a wig. I'm really curious what he looks like without all of that. And I found out, I was like, oh no, why? I don't want to know this. It's just gonna keep being on my mind now. And it turns out it is not a wig. That is his actual hair. So again, just not fair. Some people just born with all the advantages. Um, anyway, let's talk about this episode. So, variety of amazing things happening in this one. One of my favorites, uh, and I am probably going to need y'all's help. Actually, maybe I'll just pull up the IMDb for this episode. Um, but we get a new vampire being created at the end of this episode. And I am extremely interested in what happens with that. Like, are we going to follow along with their progress? Are we going to be kind of left to our own devices with the rest of the crew and then come back to her? I'm just very curious about the way that the show is going to handle talking about like the creation of new vampires and how closely we are going to follow the trajectory from being a regular human being to being turned into a vampire when you aren't aware that's what's happening to you. Because the whole thing, Najah turns this girl who is from, um, the LARP group, and it's so, it's so tragic because we know that often the sidelines, Guillermo is just waiting to be turned himself. And so, at one point, Najah says something about how she was making a new vampire, and Guillermo chimes in with what? And Nandor's just like, nothing, and, and waves him away. But this girl may well turn up at their doorstep because if she remembers who Najah is, that's the thing that I'm not entirely certain about. Najah comes up and chats with her in the park, kind of out of nowhere. And I know that she was brought to the house, but I don't remember if she saw Najah there because I, in my mind's eye, it was only Nandor and Lazlo who were like in the, and I might be wrong about that. But she doesn't react with fear to Najah? So I think maybe she does recognize her or remember her somehow. And if she does, I wonder if she'll go to her and, and be like, what the fuck, once she begins to realize what's going on? Because by the end of the episode, she's, you know, saying that she thinks she might have the flu. And they really managed to make her look ghastly, you know? They have this makeup on her and it's a, it's much less the like, I, I am just growing very pale. It's more, it looks like she has already died and her body is just sort of, uh, decaying in front of our faces. Like, it's, it's quite astonishing, actually, how, I'm trying to think of the word. I, I want to say classical, but I feel like that's, it makes it sound different than what I'm intending. But the, the show is really going for the, the very traditional depiction of a vampire. And I kind of enjoy going back to our basics like this. It's all fun to, to have there be a different type of lore in the universe that you've created. And I really do understand the appeal of that in theory. But I also really like getting to go back to the, you know, lore that honestly, I feel like I have the least experience with. It's like, treated as such a foregone conclusion that this lore is what we all know, that they don't like garlic, that they don't like crosses at the book. But I don't feel like I have encountered much media that actually follows those precepts versus media, that includes books, movies, and TV, that is just like, oh yeah, a good portion of that actually isn't true at all. And because so many things have decided to stray away from those kinds of, I guess stereotypes, you could call it, if you decided that vampires were an actual thing, it doesn't feel as much of a, like, basic conventional vampire. It feels weirdly like fresh because everyone out there has decided those rules are either too difficult to follow. Um, and I honestly do think that's a major part of it, is that a lot of authors and writers in general, they are hampered by those rules. Having it be that they have no reflection in mirrors, having it be that there's, uh, they can't eat garlic, they can't be around crosses, they can't go out in the daytime, they can't, um, uh, what's, oh, they, they don't sleep during the day. Every time that you add another one of those rules, it makes it a little bit harder to write somebody as like kind of a straight-up superhero. And that's low-key what a lot of writers want vampires to be. And so, I, I enjoy that we have all those rules in this show because it creates these sort of Achilles' heels. I'll take that because that comes up in the show a couple times this episode. But it creates these, uh, these difficulties that all of the characters have to overcome that are hilarious. And, uh, you know, sometimes it can be explained away by certain writers. I think in Dresden Files, it's explained that a lot of the lore that we understand about vampires only applies to a particular court. There are different types of vampire. Um, and there are some things like, I think in Twilight, Edward says that they like put it out there, fake rules to determine who's a vampire and who's not in order to better blend in. Because if we say, oh, vampires can't see themselves in mirrors, but we can see ourselves, and then immediately we are discounted. Of course, we're not a vampire. We have a reflection. Uh, and those are very good explanations, but I just really like how much, it's, it's more difficult if you're trying to write a, a story that's very serious. But it's a lot more fun to write a story that's comedic if you've got a lot of rules. That makes it just, the more obstacles you put into a comedy, the funnier it becomes, you know? So, anyway, Jill is in the chat. She says, I didn't know you were covering the show. It gets so good. I love the mundaneness of it. Sorry if you already said, but did you see the movie? Yes, I have. I, but it's been a really long time, so I don't remember that much of it, except that I found it really funny. I haven't re-watched it. So, the episode begins with, uh, our crowd heading to, um, this group that has a high ratio of virgins in this building, Staten Island Community College LARPing Club. And we go in there and everybody's got costumes on, and they're all doing the like play-acting of, it's, it's interesting because like LARPing can take on a few forms evidently, and I don't think, the, the first time that we see this group, it's out in the open and it's sort of presented as if they're like having a fight. And that's the way that I've seen LARPing represented is sort of, it's an excuse to have a sort of, um, play fight, you know? And I, this one was a LARPing club inside a building, and they're basically just playing D and D. But they're standing up, they're in costume, and they are doing the whole like, I'm gonna roll for initiative and, you know, play my role, but with more commitment, I would say. And because of the costumes, maybe a little bit more immersion in the surroundings. This is an interesting thing because I can't decide if I would really enjoy this or if it would make me cringe into oblivion. I just, and part of me, like, the costume aspect, I would just straight-up dress like this when I was in high school. So I know the costume aspect. I would be all about it, you know, getting together the bits and pieces for a character that I'm playing sounds super fun. And, um, my friend Sydney, she does things like this where she creates original characters in a Discord with a bunch of other people. And they basically write like fiction stories using characters that they've created, and then they will dress as that character on TikTok, and they'll make recordings of themselves saying some of the lines that they wrote for the fiction that they're doing as a group. And it's sort of like a D and D thing, but a lot more freestyle and without the sort of like structure of the gameplay. It's just the storytelling. So, I totally understand that aspect of it, but in this scene, you do see that, like, the people who take their shit way more seriously than others. Um, and this girl, what is her name? Genelf is what she's labeled as here. She says something about how like people think we mix up reality with fantasy and we don't, we know it's not real. And then the guy next to her immediately is like, it's real, it's absolutely 100% real. And she's just like, ah, motherfucker. So I love this. All the vampires are like floating outside the window, looking in, very excited, and talking about the ways in which eating people of a certain type will influence their mood for the rest of the day. So at one point, um, one of them says that they're going to eat the guy who's being a dickhead. And I think that it's, uh, Najah who says, don't eat him because he's too mean and you're gonna be, um, like, you'll be mean for the rest of the night and I don't want to be around you. Which I am very into this concept. I am, you know, I think that this is something that is in I Zombie, if I'm not mistaken, where you just eat a brain and then you have the personality of whomever it was that you just ate. But I have not watched that, full disclosure. So Najah says, why did they ignore the little female one? And I think it's Lazlo who says, perhaps it's part of their game. They pretend she's invisible. And she, we go and see her like, really, her face is just so stricken because they are going on this mission evidently within the game that requires a certain number of hit points, and she doesn't have enough of them. So she is being completely left out and she just looks so hurt by it. And Najah, oh my God, I love, this is the part that I was talking about. Um, they pretend she's invisible. We go inside, we see her face, we see this guy, this mead tastes like Griffin piss and spits it out. And Lazlo says, I don't want the, or no, Najah, I don't want these virgins. They're going to taste too sad. Oh, come on, let's just eat the mean one. No, I know what you're bloody like. If you eat the mean one, you're going to be mean uh, for the rest of the night. Um, this is a bowl of rotten fruit. Najah is not interested. I find this very funny that Najah's just watching these guys and just being like, you know what? Fuck these idiots. I hate this. So she decides that she's going to empower this girl by turning her and says, so, save strong, little one. Someday they will all be dead and you will do a shit on all their graves. Honestly, that is inspirational, I'm not gonna lie. That is something that makes me feel slightly better about the whole situation. This is good shit. Money says, if you were going to eat a sandwich, wouldn't you like to know that nobody had fucked it? It's weird, Money, because you're coming at me as if I argued against the eating of virgins. And I don't think I did, but I nevertheless just feel like it's not really the same thing? I think it's more like, I'm gonna eat a steak from a cow that got fucked, and in that case, that's fine. I would also like, he says, it's a quote from the movie You Know Memory-Having Person. Well, I did say, it's been years and years, so yeah, I do not remember that. Um, but yeah, I really would like to know what the like parameters are for determining if somebody is a virgin. Because if it's the, you know, well, I can have anal, but I can't have penetrative sex, then there would be a lot of queer people who would still be construed as virgins, even though they are not. And that just feels a little bit unfair. That feels biased. So I'm curious about what their standards are in that regard and if they can actually tell, or if it's just a totally mental thing where they just personally like, they feel better about it. So, then we go to credits. I just love this song. Um, they begin talking about the Baron and sort of the fact that like, uh, Money says, I think it's like wine snobs, completely full of shit, but bougie as hell. That makes a lot of sense, actually. I like that idea. Um, yeah, as somebody, I have never like tried to do wine tasting in that way. I, uh, have had done some for like pairing with desserts and stuff when I was in culinary school. But I have a hard time sometimes believing that like, the wines that are expensive are actually worth the expense. I don't know if that's true. I don't like to just say it's absolutely not, because sometimes there are things that I taste and I'm like, oh, okay, now it makes sense why this is super expensive, but not always. So, what, the, the problem is that the clarity of the Baron's orders is muddled by the fact that he tends to give these orders in the middle of you having an orgasm. This is very amusing to me. The whole thing is like, it's, it's one of those, this actually happens in Sex and the City at one point. Charlotte is like riding her husband and, or no, she's riding her, uh, her boyfriend that she's hoping to marry. And he doesn't want to propose because she's not Jewish, and he promised his mother that he would marry a Jewish woman on her deathbed. And Charlotte's riding him and just before he's about to come, she asks if her not being Jewish is really that important. And he says, no. And she tries to hold him to that later, and he's like, oh my God, get out of here. I was about to come. You absolutely cannot like hold me to a promise I make when I was about to come. That's just super manipulative. And thankfully, she does drop it. But, uh, that is sort of sounding like what the Baron is trying to do here is like just get people to agree to anything because they are in the throes of passion and they'll say whatever they need to say because they are desperate to come. So they're all trying to determine what exactly he even means by this. And, and they decide to have a secret meeting in the fancy room to talk about this. In the meantime, we see Guillermo. He's being, uh, held up by Nandor to dust one of the lamps, the like hanging chandelier. And we get introduced to the Baron's familiar. The worst part about having the Baron stay with us is the Baron's familiar. She's so creepy. She gets, she's got everyone on edge popping up behind doors, behind bushes. She can hear everything we say. Now, every time we see her, it's, she doesn't actually say anything. I don't know if we actually hear what her name is ever, but she's got this like line around her throat. And I can't tell if this is just a result of like age and she's just got a, like a wrinkle that happens to cross her throat. But it looks so much like the scar that Jonas has in dark from being hanged. Um, and I'm just like, is this woman like, is she like, was she half-dead? Like, what happened? And I don't, like I said, I don't know if we actually hear what her name is, but this is all we see of her this episode. The rest of it, she doesn't turn up at all, and I'm very curious what they're going to do with her because it feels like they're setting up something. Um, so, they go into the library and they begin talking about what it is the Baron wants them to do. Did he mean all of America? Did he mean all of North America? Does that include Canada? Najah says something about how he specifically said Staten Island and that's all it is. And they all seem to disagree with her on that. So in the midst of this meeting, they get interrupted by, uh, what's his face? Colin? Is that his name? The name of the other dude? Yeah, Colin. Um, and I really do like the fact that they don't want to include him or tell him anything, even though it's not like it would matter that he knew. That's like the impression I get anyway. So their business, because they are blood vampires instead of energy vampires, is very separate from his, right? The whole thing with the Baron being here, for instance, he wasn't there to greet the Baron. Like, this doesn't seem to have anything to do with him, and he seems perfectly fine with that. What I'm curious about is if this, like, if he were to be involved, and if the Baron were to find out Colin was involved, would it be a problem? Is there like, because the fact that Colin can drain them all of their energy makes him feel like quite a threat, actually. And I'm not sure what the overall feeling is between regular vampires and energy vampires. Like, is there a symbiosis to that? Or is this situation with them living with an energy vampire sort of an outlier and a weird thing that they're doing that other vampires would never do? And therefore, would the Baron give a shit? Or would he just be like, oh, okay, I mean, I guess if this works for you? Because if you've got somebody in the house who is a daywalker, but also a vampire, the, the whole point of having familiars is you need people to represent you during the day, to take care of you, to ensure that things are, are in place in, in, in terms of very practical stuff, like the mortgage getting paid. Like, making sure people don't figure out you're a vampire, getting cover stories set up, just, you know, all that shit. But if you've got a daywalker, energy vampire, you might be able to get away with not having a familiar. Now Guillermo is Nandor's familiar. The other two familiars we have seen, but they didn't speak, and one of them got eaten by the Baron. So, whose were they and will they be replaced? What does that look like? Those are my other questions. I'm really enjoying all the lore. So Colin comes in and is like, so, uh, I was just eavesdropping behind the curtain here. And they try and say, oh, they were planning a, uh, surprise party for him. And he's like, mm, okay, no, you weren't. Let's just fucking talk about what you were talking about. I know exactly who you need to talk to and where to go. And they head out on the bus. I really enjoy the smash cut from, let us begin our journey to world domination. And then we smash cut to the very unflattering fluorescent lighting of the inside of a bus. I think that might be, for me, one of my favorite parts of this episode is the lighting because they really do establish the banality of different locations by having this like really modern weird lighting that we all know really well, but it isn't thrown into relief how ordinary it feels until it's contrasted with their home that's lit by like candlelight and chandelier light, you know? So when we go to this moment on the bus and like the yellow hand hole, handrails down the middle of it and everything, and how unflattering it all is, eventually, they all just decide that they are going to turn into bats and fly, even though they don't actually know the way there. And they wind up on the top of the bus, just like hanging out, waiting to get there, but trying, doing it to get away from Colin. And I really liked this whole thing that we get to see the fact that while they do depend on him, they do not like him, they don't pretend to like him, and they are all in agreement about just completely abandoning Guillermo there. I was sort of wondering about the overall, how territorial are these vampires about their familiars? Is Colin allowed to drain Guillermo of his energy, or is that considered like a real faux pas? I would assume it's the faux pas. Like, you just don't, that's just a rude thing to do and he wouldn't do that. But I am curious if there's like a real, you know, standard there or not. Um, so then we go to the Staten Island Borough Council Meeting on zoning. And our crew is seated against the back wall observing and sort of baffled at the way this all works. And they don't, they are very unimpressed at the, you know, the bureaucracy of the whole thing. Najah wants to know when the wrestling is going to start. Uh, same. I would also like to know this. Thank you. And there's a woman in this who winds up becoming, um, uh, like sort of major part of the rest of the episode because she is the, I think the, I'm trying to remember what the, her title is. She has been in other things, other comedic stuff, and I wish I could figure out what I knew her from. But she is the person that eventually Lazlo goes to see, and he leaves all of those dead raccoons on her front porch. And I found that to be one of the better jokes. I loved this whole thing. But the whole fact that he's like trying to get on her good side by killing all these raccoons and leaving them for her, like, it's completely understandable from our perspective why he thinks that was just a token of friendship. I was showing that it was, I was on her side. It was a gift. But if you opened your door and there were a pile of dead raccoons, you would definitely be like, I, some, some, this is like a threat. Somebody is definitely indicating that they plan to kill me. The only thing is I wish she would remember, oh, the weird guy I talked to last night when I talked about how there was such a raccoon problem. But she doesn't seem to put that together at all. I don't know if she is thinking that, because she says something about like, whether or not he, like, the raccoons are messages from like terrorists. Who does she say? It's one of those like, the name of a gang that, that people all thought that the, uh, the people crossing the border from Mexico were part of. And I can't remember. Ashley says MS-13. Thank you, Ashley. That's the one. Um, but the fact that she leaps to that is so hilarious. And does she think Lazlo is MS-13? Anyway, Colin goes up there to do what he calls a mega-feed and begins reading about zoning ordinances and what do they mean? Webster's unabridged dictionary defines ordinance, ordinance as authoritative, blah, blah, and he keeps going. And we cut away, but when we cut back, everybody is slumped over. And he turns away with that white flash to his eyes and that face that he makes, which I just find so amusing. And in the meantime, when we, we go back to the vampires and find out exactly what it is they are looking to propose. And in the meantime, when we, we go back to the vampires and find out exactly what it is they are looking to propose. And Lazlo says that he would like a dome that covers the whole island, blocking out all sunlight. Uh, Najah says no noise during daylight hours. Nandor says all local churches destroy their crucifixes. A total ban on turtlenecks, a vampire only television channel. I would like for me personally, my favorite comedy, Priests Falling Over. Honestly, that doesn't sound so bad. I might watch Priests Falling Over. I'm just saying. Uh, free but compulsory harpsichord concerts every day of the week. Uh, I really liked that one a lot. I like it whenever they, they are clearly still very into their old fashioned shit. You know, them trying to embrace modern stuff is definitely fun. But again, a vampire with a cellphone, we've seen it a million times. A vampire who still wears the clothing of his own era and wants to listen to harpsichord music all the time. I love that. It's just so much more fun, you know? So, um, eventually Nandor goes up and he does his whole presentation, this shit, a present, he, first of all, he's just wearing his cloak. And he goes up greetings mortals and it's all microphone feedback. You guys, I would like to know how these people in this room, which again has the really ugly artificial lighting, manage to look so passive while he gets up and gives this speech. That I couldn't, I couldn't not laugh. I would be absolutely useless as like a comedic actor. There is just no way I could do it. I just, I just don't think I could do it. I, Nandor, the relentless conqueror of thousands, immortal warrior who has twice turned the Euphrates itself red with blood. And as he's saying this, my favorite part is that the, the camera cuts to a view of this room from the, uh, closed circuit television camera, um, or I say closed circuit, is that the right word? It's, you know, from the local access channel because they show the, the city council meetings. So we get to see that like he is indeed being recorded. And everybody can hear, you know, and see like, I wasn't sure if they would be picked up on camera, but we see the opening, like the whole montage is them through the years in photos. So evidently I should have realized. I hereby demand complete and total supplication of this governing body to my command. Submit and receive mercy. Resist, dot, 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 and only death awaits. Can I tell you guys that my favorite part of the whole thing with him delivering this? Is that Guillermo's in the background watching like a proud Papa? His chest is swelled up and he keeps looking from Nandor to like the city council like, what do you think? Pretty good, huh? I fucking love this so much. I really do. Thank you for your input, uh, Mr. Nandor. But this is zoning ordinances if you'd like to return. And I love as she continues to explain that he's like in the wrong place for this. You expect him to get rather irritated, but instead he's like, oh, 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 okay, come back. Okay. When is the, when is that meeting that I should come back for? Two months? Okay. Got it. I will keep that in mind. Thanks. And he like just completely retreats. It's amazing. I really like, he's so polite, honestly. If you access our website, do you, do you have a computer? Um, that will be the perfect time for you to speak. So that is the end of that and they all file out of there and Lazlo is just really bummed because he like heard the speech and it's like, he didn't even mention anything about the shit that we wanted. And then we go to him saying, Nandor is blessedly unburdened with the complications of a university education. But give him an axe and he's second to none. Though you wouldn't want him as your barrister. And he laughs and then says, don't let him fucking see this. I really enjoy this. Um, it's so weird because Nandor seems like such a softie that to imagine him out there like murdering is just, I can't, I can't even think about it, you know? And I know that he does. We see them killing people left and right. But it's just a weird, like it just doesn't, he feels like somebody who would just be like, oh, look at him. He's crying. I'm sorry. You know, that's kind of the vibe that I get off of him, to be honest. So let's see, I'm trying to find the moment. Barbara Lazzaro. Okay. I'm about to look up Barbara Lazzaro to see what this actor, actress's name is. Um, because she is from something that I can't remember if she played somebody excellent. Or if she was really like awful and that's part of why I remember her. Um, but she like is, is burned into my memory and I can't place her and it's gonna drive me fucking nuts. No, uh, their IMDb is like not super helpful. Ah, God, I'm gonna have to do this search on my own time. I thought I could get an easy answer. It's just driving me nuts. I'm wondering, was she in um, that HBO, The Leftovers? Ah, that's ringing a bell for me. I feel like maybe that's where I know her from. Um, anyway. Okay, so Lazlo is trying to figure out what Barbara's Achilles heel is, although he doesn't understand the Achilles heel thing and the meaning behind it. Colin tries to explain it to him and he's just like, nope, thanks. I'm good. And I gotta be honest. As much as I like get frustrated when characters don't wanna like listen to an explanation of things. If you are going to choose to ignore anybody's attempt to explain something, it would be Colin's because you would just think he's trying to eat you. So I'm not mad at Lazlo for just being like, never mind. And Colin says Doug Peterson is looking to unseat her in the upcoming election. Some people think he has a chance. The streak of piss with a case, shall we kiss, shall we kill him as a warning? No. Let's use him as a pawn, but then I will visit Barbara Lazzaro under cover of night. And this is framed as if he's going to go and like threaten her. But instead he decides that he's going to extend the hand of friendship allegedly. Um, this is when we cut to Najah coming up on the girl. Uh, whose name I'm still not remembering. I feel like it's, it said Jen Elf, but I can't remember if that is like her character name. I feel like it has to be, right? And we get Najah saying, back home in my village, I had many strikes against me. I was a woman. I had gypsy blood and we were so poor that we used donkey dung, donkey dung for fuel. And when the donkey dung ran out, we would have to burn the donkey. So yes, I do know what it feels like to be mocked and teased and to cry myself to sleep at night by the light of a burning donkey. I love her so much. I love her so much. I don't feel like I've seen this actress before. I may be mistaken. But I really want her to have like a lot more work. She is just delightful. So, yeah, she's talking to this girl. Let's walk and talk about what the future could be like for the new Jenna. Jenna. Okay. So Jen Elf is her character name. And the thing that Jenna seems to think is that first of all, Najah is a senior in her college. And second of all, that what Najah is proposing is like sexual experimentation. And she's not immune to this like suggestion. She isn't like, I'm super not interested in that or just straight up like, I'm not queer and I have, I have a boyfriend already. She talks about her boyfriend and is like, he tells me that I like these things and so I do them. And it's very clear as she's saying it that she doesn't have the self-confidence or even the knowledge of herself to really like put up an argument about that. And that's one of those things that I, I really understand. Because you know, I was a teenage girl too, early twenties girl too. And I know what it's like to just not have enough knowledge of yourself to be certain that you should turn something down because you're like, maybe I do like this. I don't know, you know? But obviously she doesn't really feel like she has agency in that whole situation either, which is a whole other problem. So she sort of like reaches out to Najah. She starts stroking her leg in this way where I, it felt like Najah pulls away with this realization of like, oh, that's what she means. Or thinks that I mean. And, uh, this beautiful older woman wants to take me on a sexual journey. And, and like I, and she sort of says, maybe we can just start with mouth stuff. And Najah's like, yeah, yeah, we can totally do that. And bites her neck and doesn't tell her anything about what is actually happening here. Which is unfortunate because it feels like just a repeat of Jenna getting like used for other people, even though she didn't really know what she was saying yes to or felt like she had a real say in it. So I get what Najah is attempting here. But she is not being forthcoming and I wish she would. But yeah, we see her feeding. Jenna says, ow, uh, oh, wowee zowie, that is, and Najah says, shush darling, you don't need to talk. And she says, oh, I'm sorry. I always talk too much. Oh, sweetie, I'm so sorry. So then we cut to Lazzaro, or not Lazzaro, that's Barbara's last name. We cut to Lazlo. And he's talking about what he's going to, like how he's going to handle Barbara Lazzaro. My plan is to handle her. Am I devious? Yes, I think I am. But as the old saying goes, I didn't come here to make friends. And then he pauses and says, that's bullshit. That's exactly what I came here to do. I love that moment so much. At first when he says, I didn't come here to make friends. I was like, that's the first time anybody has said that shit and I actually like believed it. But then he immediately follows it up with, wait, oh my God, I'm such a liar. And I was like, oh, I guess in the grand scheme, that is true. Actually. So Madame Lazzaro is handling her grants, her granddaughter. So she steps out and she's got a baby. And Lazlo says, what a lovely nibble she would be. And I'm like, oh, sir. We know that you're talking about just killing and eating her. But that sounds so much more sinister in a way because of what it would sound like to an ordinary person. Yikes. And this is when she finally talks about, because he keeps on saying things about, you know, not trusting the people around you, your enemies are, are closing in. She keeps trying to tell him to do regular office hours. And she's like very kind, to be honest, considering how incredibly freaky he is and the crazy shit that he's saying to her. But eventually she's like, yeah, okay, I'm gonna have to go inside, but not before she mentions the raccoon problem. So then we go to Nandor. And his method. Oh, you know what? I just realized. I was saying how Barbara doesn't remember, doesn't like mention anything about how he's, she told somebody specifically about the problem with all the raccoons. But it's because he says at the end that she won't remember. So he like does the, the mental whammy to keep her from remembering that they even had this conversation. I totally forgot that, but that's actually a pretty good bit. So Nandor feels that what Lazlo's trying to do is a shit plan. The power move here is to make Doug Peterson my personal agent of chaos. Peterson destroys Lazzaro, Nandor destroys Peterson, and the council is mine. And I'm like, I really wanna know how he thought that was going to work. Why would that be true? But it doesn't seem like they, any of them have any idea how this works, which is what makes it so funny. And we see him going up to Scott Peterson on the street. That's a nice little bitch you've got there on a leash with a, by a frightened little man. It reminds me of how you are led about on a leash by the human bitch Barbara Lazzaro. Oh my God, coming out strong. All right, Nandor, go for it, I guess. And Scott's just as, of course, like any of us would be, okay, do you want my wallet? Or how do I get out of this alive? Unfortunately, Scott, it does not seem like you are going to be able to get out of this in any way that will be a happy ending for you. So he does his mental whammy. Tonight, before you drift into a slumber, you will hear a voice that will command your actions. And he just says, okay. And Nandor says, oh, okay, great. And then just turns to the camera and gives us a little eyebrow wiggle before that scene cuts. I love that so much. Oh my God, Lazlo dealing with these raccoons. Fucking thing bit me. Seems like I over rested our kinship. I'll have to take things up a notch. And he goes over there and begins to play a clarinet. And we see this raccoon coming toward him and then another, you guys, I know that I have said this before on other shows. But raccoons are, in my opinion, one of the cutest animals alive. You would think that I would have a lot more of a problem with the fact that he's going to kill all of these raccoons. But I know that it's just a show. And I really think based on, they may be CGI. But I think that these are all actual raccoons in this scene. And you guys, they are so fat and they are so cute. I want to take them all home with me. I love them so much. There's like eight of them. Oh my God. There's a fucking YouTube channel, a guy, I think he lives in Canada. And he feeds the local raccoons and they like crowd onto his back porch. And he feeds them Oreos and like hot dogs and stuff and grapes. They love grapes. And they, there, there's gotta be at least like 25 of them. And I swear to God, he posts video after video. They're all super long. They are all of just him feeding these animals and I could just watch those forever. I do not get bored. They're so cute. Anyway. So then we go to Nandor. I love this. Calling to you through the ether. And he keeps on forgetting his name, that it's Peterson. And at one point Guillermo ducks his head in and is like, were you, were you calling me? And he's like, no, no. I mean, if I was calling you, I wouldn't do it through the ether. I would just yell in a normal way. Oh my God, these little bits are so funny to me by just regular yelling. So he calls out, um, oh, I think I was calling him Scott. Oh yikes, Scott Peterson. I feel like that's a bad man's name. Um, Doug Peterson, but he's calling out and this dude is like almost asleep in front of the TV and he looks up and is like, I hear you. And Nandor just says, great. Hi Doug. Oh my God. I love that so much. So the moment after Najah has fed on Jenna, she says to her, now my sweet little baby turkey, I'd like you to drink something from this vial. Oh, okay. Is it vodka or something? It's like a very strong spirit with a little spicy kick. It's my blood. And she takes a sip of it with like this look on her face and is like, oh, your blood is deli- And she takes a sip of it with like this look on her face and is like, oh, your blood is delicious. Why do you call it that? And when she looks over at Najah, her eyes are so freaky looking. She's got like, um, the sclera have turned like pinkish and the irises have turned sort of white. And it just looks really, really unsettling. I thought this was very well done. Just that kind of moment where very simple effects can be put to such good use. You don't need to have a huge budget or do anything really elaborate to make somebody look like, ooh, oh God, what's happening over there? So then we have the whole thing in the meeting, the, the next like town council meeting where Barbara's talking about all of these raccoons being left and what a threat it is and trying to figure out what's going on. And Doug gets his chance to speak. This moment, you guys. It's a grim portent of things to come if we don't surrender, you ignorant bitch. And everybody's like, what the fuck? I will rip your head from your body and I will hang your entrails from the traffic light on Highland Boulevard. So our new masters will see that only those who submit will survive. Oh my God. And they, the security comes in and starts to drag him away. Heed my vision before it's too late. I have received a message from a slouching beast in the night. And Nandor is over there so happy. He looks like he's just delighted. Nandor, I don't think this is what you wanted, sweetie. I don't think this is gonna accomplish anything. Laszlo, I think says, um, oh no, Na- Nandor says, the man is quite obviously mad. And Laszlo says, or someone's driven him mad. And I'm like, does Nandor think that they don't know what's going on here? I think Nandor thinks he's being sly. Like they don't know what the fuck is going on here. Something terrible is coming. Unhand me. Oh, God. So perhaps we should come up with a new plan then. And as they're leaving, Doug is screaming, vengeance will be mine when nightmares are made real. And as they're getting up to leave, they ask Colin if he's coming and he says, no, I can't stand up right now, if you know what I mean. And he's got his mouth open in that like feeding face that he makes. And his eyes are doing that weird like whitish thing and it is incredibly upsetting. I hate it so much. Colin feeding is so goddamned creepy. That shit is a horror movie. Colin could be the lead in a horror movie. Easily. And it's all from his perspective about like, you know, what he does to people. And it's like, I would not care one bit if there was no blood. It would still be the most disturbing shit. Oh my God, I hate it. I will tear your balls off and feed them to your children. Oh, God. So then we cut to Jenna at the end. I've been fighting off this very intense flu, I think. And oh my God, she looks ghastly. I didn't have enough layers on the other night. And her roommate in the background says, I think it's mono. And she says, no, I don't think it's. And then she turns and vomits what looks like either a stream of blood. I don't know, maybe not. Because there's a lot of like clear in there. So maybe it's not just blood. Maybe it's her like emptying her stomach out. Because now she doesn't need food anymore and that's part of like the transformation. Is that part of vampire lore? That when you get turned, you like vomit up all of the, the actual food that is in your system because you don't need it? I don't know if that's a thing because like I said, a lot of this lore is stuff that I'm not super familiar with. Like, I, I don't know if it's said in this show, but I know that some of the lore from like one of the original, I don't know if it's Dracula, I think it is. Is that you need to be buried, you need to sleep in a coffin filled with dirt from your homeland? And I don't think that's a thing on this show, or maybe it just hasn't even been mentioned yet, but I don't think so. Um, but yeah, that was something that like I had never even heard of until like a year or two ago, you know? So I don't know, there very well may be something about the fact that like, once you get turned, you vomit and that whole thing just is the transition to not needing regular human food anymore. So I'm trying to see if there was anything else that I, oh my God, I forgot that Laszlo tells Barbara that she's a credit to the women's suffragette movement. And I love her face when he says that, like, she just doesn't really know how to take it, you know? She doesn't want, she's not offended exactly because like, he's trying to pay her a compliment, but also what the fuck are you talking about? I, God, I'm trying, I really do think that I know her from, from, what do you call it? Leftovers, actually. I'm not gonna look for her anymore because I'm pretty confident that that's how I know her. But that show was also really disturbing. I think that she wound up being somebody who got killed. Who was part of, uh, the guilty remnant. If you have not watched Leftovers, it isn't nowhere at all in any way the same tone. So, uh, I wouldn't like just recommend it, but it is a very good show, but it is really disturbing also. So, oh God. I just really, I, I wonder if this is gonna be dropped in the next episode? Or if they're going to try to do a thing through city council again? Part of me kind of wants them to return to this just a little because I feel like people have to start putting together that they have had, hmm, I don't know. I was gonna say that they were part of like what's been weird about the last couple of meetings because they do stand out quite a bit. But they wiped the memory of everybody that was involved and nobody's gonna think that there's like mind control shit happening or anything like that. I, I don't know though. I kinda like this idea. Um, at the same time, I don't know how long you can continue that kind of joke. And not have it either be incredibly repetitive or start to have it turn into like, well, but these characters would, would attract too much attention by being this constantly publicly involved all the time. Also, I would be curious to know how they're going to present what they've been doing to the Baron, if they do at all. Because the Baron, I don't know how much he understands modern life. I assume not at all. But it's hard to know because he knows some things that it feels like he shouldn't. He also, the way that he says like that he's like reawakened, it gives the impression that he's been like asleep a long time. So really, I would like to know more about the Baron and his familiar and what the fuck her deal is, what her name is. And yeah, that's about it. But I'm really enjoying this show. It's been, it's been real, like I really need to get Owen watching this with me too, because he would find this so fucking funny. Um, so thank you again to Ashley for commissioning this. I really appreciate it. Thank you again to all of you in the chat, especially you money, you monster. And I will be seeing you again actually pretty soon. Um, oh no, I lied. Not too soon. April thirtieth is the next episode. So it'll be a month, a month from today. But I will see you then with a new episode. Until then, toodleoo motherfuckers.